I'm going to call to order the Finance Corporation meeting, which, don't be confused, you're in the right spot. We're gonna do a quick, uh, meeting that's a, uh, protocol. So, uh, we'll get to the board meeting. But, um, I'd like to call to order the Finance Corporation meeting. We have two motions to address in this meeting. And, the first of those is a recommended motion to approve the appointment of Julie Kuhnhein as president, Clem Fennell as vice president, and Brian Robinson as secretary of the Finance Corporation. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second? Oh, it's official first to second, it's official first second. Alright, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Our second motion is, uh, recommended motion is approval of the minutes from our meeting on May 20th of 2024. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Alright, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Alright, that brings to a close our meeting. Uh, oh, no, we have to have a motion to end it. So, um, do I hear a motion, uh, to adjourn the meeting at 6:31?
Aye.
Alright, it's first first. And, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, meeting adjourned. Alright. Now, probably what you're here for, um, I call to order the regular Board of Education meeting, and we will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its sacred republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so, um, as we are getting ready, um, we have recognitions here, but, or is that ahead of the Board bravos?
I'm gonna start with bravos and updates.
That's okay, that's what I thought, but I thought maybe I was rusty. Alright, um, we'll get started, first off, with just, um, a little bit of recognition of what has gone on in the last month for Board bravos. I do, um, have one that I would like to share about the spirit program, um, if that's okay to start, and I wrote it down to have the specifics. Highlands Spirit Programs have been busy and have been very successful over the last month, or six weeks. So, uh, these are the teams that support the teams out there, your cheer and dance. Um, first off, to celebrate, the Highlands Middle School Cheer Team placed fourth at KPOS with their highest score ever. This is the second year in a row they've placed fourth, so also the best finish they've had. There were sixteen teams in their category, and they did go third in order, which is, if you know, you know, um, is top to go in the beginning of the order. So, good job to those ladies and coaches. Also, our high school cheer advanced to state after winning regionals and placed third out of twenty-one teams. So, that is also the best finish in program history, and they are getting ready for Nationals in Orlando in early February, so be on the lookout, because they'll do a little send-off for that. Um, you can go and support them. Our high school JV team has also, uh, took a couple of first places at both Mount Notre Dame and Manuel in Palm, um, in the Manuel competition, competing with a varsity Palm, not just JV. Our middle school dance team, first in hip-hop at Mount Notre Dame, and they have their state competition coming up. And I think we might be hearing more about the high school varsity dance team a little bit later. Um, so I won't toot that horn too much right now.
Uh, I'm gonna give a quick call-out on the snow removal around town. Um, extended Christmas break that, uh, most parents were probably ready to not have, and getting back to school. And I know we don't have the transportation challenges a lot of other districts have, but, uh, good job, you know, I know it, it Wednesday, first thing Wednesday morning was, was probably a little tough, but, uh, good job to all of our, you know, everyone working for the city that, that got the snow removed and everything around the school. Um, I think we did pretty good on, on getting back as soon as we could with all that snow.
I noticed some of the guys that just went back today for the first day, so.
Yeah.
Good job for our guys.
And, and our district staff, as Clem said, and I think too, there was a lot of people who just kind of pitched in to, you know, families and, um, you know, family members that kind of banded together and, and cleared out areas around the school. So, thank you for all that assistance.
Yeah, and one thing just to note is, um, Middle School Musical is coming up later on this month. Um, Willy Wonka Jr. and the kids and the crew and the teachers have been doing a lot of work to prep for that, so just make sure to come out and see that show. I think January 24th, 25th, and 26th are the, the dates of the show.
I'd like to, to welcome Noah Gibson to, uh, to our Board of Education. Uh, welcome. We're really glad that you've joined us. Also, a couple of other updates. Uh, this is for anyone who has a, uh, school-aged child going into next school year. Our kindergarten registration for Fort Thomas Residence, uh, begins next week, so the 21st through the 23rd. Uh, it is an online registration. Anyone in here who knows, uh, uh, students of that age, please spread the word. Um, that's when we, we first come into, uh, into the district. Also, our, um, our Highlands Athletic Boosters Association Booster Bash is February 1st, so let's come up and make some plans to go there. And, um, I know that, uh, I'll echo the, the sentiment, uh, around the, the local snow removal and, and the, and the school preparations, uh, but also add just my appreciation to the, to the greater community in, in taking, taking the necessary steps, waking up earlier, uh, finding ways to, to transport kids to school, make sure that we're all ready to go. So, so thank you to our, our families, uh, for all that. Uh, with that in mind, we're off again on Monday, uh, for Martin Luther King Junior Day, so, um, so just a reminder for that.
Alright, um, so that takes us to school board recognition?
Yep, we, we have a presentation from Stephanie Ewald here. It is, uh, Board Appreciation Month, and so, uh, representative from our, our Teachers Association here, Miss Ewald.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the Fort Thomas Education Association to express our gratitude and the gratitude of the FTIS teachers for the dedication and commitment of our board members embodied as they lead our schools to the best in the state. The experience we have with our board in Fort Thomas is a special one. Here in Fort Thomas, our board members are our neighbors, friends, and colleagues. Our Fort Thomas representatives have always been able to easily contact them with questions and concerns. Our board has constantly remain, remained committed to help our teachers and students reach out for their dreams. Every year, this board donates their stipends to provide scholarships for our students and teachers. This is just one of the many examples of why the FTIS board members are so special. Please accept this small token of our teachers' gratitude for the servant leadership each of you provide in our community. Thank you so much for everything you guys do.
Thank you. And I'll just echo a, a couple comments, uh, on behalf of all of our, our faculty staff and the community for, for Board Appreciation Month. The entire month is, is, is a, a month to appreciate you. Noah's been here for like thirty minutes, I think we appreciated it. Uh, when I think of our Board of Education, really, uh, service, sacrifice, and wisdom, uh, are, are three words that, that come to mind. Uh, this is a, a group of individuals that, uh, that run for an office that has, um, a small stipend that they turn around and give away to our students who are aspiring teachers and, uh, and teachers who want to continue education. So, so it is, it is, uh, truly one that is of utter sacrifice. And the individuals that I've been able to work with, uh, on our Board of Education, uh, and I know Noah, uh, for sure will, will join into this, um, always use what, what is best for our students is, is the guiding question in every decision that we make. Um, and so a, a, a large amount of time is, is, is considered of how do we support our staff, how do we support our teachers, in order to make sure our students have, um, a world-class education? Uh, and so I, I can't tell you enough, uh, as, as, as I'm speaking to my bosses here, uh, about how much we appreciate you, but also as a, uh, as a parent of children that have, have come through our school system, uh, just thank you. Uh, it, it is, it is very much appreciated. Uh, and, and one that is, um, uh, you know, you, you get a, a lot of ideas as how to run things, but, but you guys are, are the ones that have to consider it all and make that decision. So, thank you so much. Uh, we do, uh, also have a gift for you. Um, and while I'm giving out the gifts, if we can have one more round of appreciation and applause for it.
Again, right? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it was one for you, you know, I was just, you know, first and second everything. Thanks.
Alright, well, thank you. Yes, as we always remind the new incoming board members, uh, don't get used to it. That only happens once a year, and it is greatly appreciated. Um, but, um, thank you very much to, uh, the staff, the teachers, and the community. Alright, our next, uh, recognition will be of our holiday card artist, and it looks like Mr. Darnell will tell us about that person.
Yes, so, uh, last month, you showed the card of Parker Green, and so we have Parker Green here to talk about her inspiration for the card and also answer any questions you have. So, come on up.
So, when Mrs. Bravo sent off a message to our club about the holiday card, she said that the preference, if we were going to include a bird, would be a bluebird.
Did she?
And I remember seeing them in the backyard, especially during the summer, but I also remember how striking their colors were during the winter, like Cardinals and the bright red. So, I wanted to do something that would really stand out and still be simple and cute, something that would still be like wintery, but also represent Highlands.
I think, yeah.
I'm a junior.
And, um, are you interested in pursuing art, or is it a passion, hobby, or?
Um, it is a passion, and I've been in art for several years. I've been in art since eighth grade. And I can remember doing other art classes next year. Um, I don't know if I'll continue with art classes in like college or about doing art major, but it's definitely going to still be a problem here.
How long does it take to do that?
Um, it takes about an hour.
I'm a graphic designer, so I do all my art on the computers. I'm always impressed when I see a display and actually paint. It's a good job.
Yeah, I just have to wait for it to dry.
That was a great job. It was awesome.
And Mr. Robinson is very glad that it is a bluebird and not.
You know, I love Cardinals. I do love Cardinals, um, but they're definitely not the preference. Parker, you nailed it, uh, with, with the bluebird, nice work.
Great job.
And, and we will have recognition, um, of Mr. Fennell?
Yeah.
And it includes a check.
There you go, great job.
Congratulations.
Alright, I think next is the, um, dance team. So, we are here not just to celebrate one state championship, but our dance team won two state championships at the most recent competition. So, we have our varsity team here today with the trophies. And, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Coach Ashley Robleski, just to talk about the season and what's next for all these young ladies.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ashley. I'm the coach of the varsity dance team here at Highlands, and I just wanted to do a little mention of my assistant coaches Molly and Lauren, who have helped me a lot throughout this year. Um, I want to say thank you for recognizing the girls today. They work so hard, and they actually just came from practice. Uh-huh, so that's why we look the way we do. But, these girls work so hard all year. They start in July, and their season goes across not only fall, but winter as well. Um, and we end in February. We dance at all home football games and also select basketball games for girls and boys. On top of that, they compete at local and a national competition. Uh, we just recently received two state championship titles, one in the Palm Division and one in hip-hop. We were the only team to title in two divisions that weekend, so we're so incredibly proud of them. Um, that was the first time Highlands has ever done that as well. Um, so, like I said, these girls work so hard, so I'll let them introduce themselves. Um...
My name's Rosie Wald, I'm a sophomore.
My name, my name's Abby Rolland, I'm a junior.
My name's Reese Whitty, and I'm a senior.
My name's Adeline Schall, and I'm a sophomore.
My name's Elise Helman, and I'm a junior.
My name's Meredith Clyer, and I'm a junior.
My name's Sarah Seppner, and I'm a junior.
My name's Brianna Horner, I'm a junior.
My name's Sarah Sidon, and I'm a sophomore.
My name's Kate Fisher, and I'm a sophomore.
My name's Addie Orman, I'm a senior.
My name's Morgan Harold, and I'm a senior.
My name's Debra Ellison, I'm a freshman.
My name is Alec Cunningham, and I'm a senior.
My name's Annie Kuhnhein, and I'm a junior.
And my name's Shelby Shields, and I'm a senior.
So, I mean, I know that, you know, the dance, you know, is quite the commitment, right? You guys are just in practice. It's non-stop. So, you just won, uh, the titles, and now you're in practice. What's, what's next?
Oh, that's, that's correct. I don't have to move on anymore, but, um, we go to our Nationals competition, um, in Orlando, which is mid-February. We won the 14th, I believe, so we're really preparing for that right now. Um, so we're hoping to do amazing there as well. Hopefully, we can stay undefeated in some of our divisions. So...
How many ones are competing in that?
So, in our Palm Division, we have around forty teams that we compete against. In our Hip-Hop Division, it's around this.
Justin Staley.
Right, right, guys?
I had the pleasure of, of watching the routines on video, and what, what was the phrase that says, "I did not come to play"?
Yeah.
It, uh, it really stuck out. And, who, who was the dancer that flipped over the rest? That was, that was the...
Ella, probably.
Yeah. All I can tell you is, I, I think I pulled a muscle just watching you guys. Very, very, very impressive. Um, it, it's a great run, and we look forward to, to hearing how, how well Nationals go.
Thank you, guys.
And we've got t-shirts here.
And as, as Clem's hand, handing those out, the community can come see them perform, hopefully some routines, um, before they head out to Nationals, so.
I bet the parents want a picture too, so I'll, yeah. Yeah, don't, hey, Reese, Reese, grab that trophy.
Police license is on band for parents that can't sing.
For the parents to hop and get a picture too.
We guys sit there first. Great job, ladies. Now, a lot of them have to get to another dance practice, so. Yeah. I know, one studio has practice.
Alright, and last, we have our Navigo Scholarship for the Spring. So, Navigo was previously a standalone organization, and it is now a part of Children, Inc. over in Covington. And so, local businesses and corporations in the greater Cincinnati area agree to take on student interns for the duration of the spring semester, the fall semester, or it could be for an entire year. So, we have these five students who were selected as Navigo Scholars for the spring semester, so I'm gonna have you all go ahead and come forward if you don't mind. So, we have Ethan Adikari, Lauren Battle, Abigail Burling, Wyatt Carbone, and Cameron Lowsee, and they will each tell you what they're doing and why they decided to apply for that.
My name is Abigail Burling. I'm doing the trades program, and I'll be learning, like welding and AC, stuff like that. Um, I chose to do it because I've been really, I'm a very hands-on learner. I've learned, I've been really interested in autobuy repair specifically, so I'm gonna do that my junior and senior year at a vocational school.
So, you're a sophomore, is that helping out?
My name's Cameron Lowsee. I chose education because I wanted to go through a career as a student.
My name is Ethan Adikari, I'm a sophomore. I chose psychology, not only because I wanted to do that later in my life, but also my dad also knows how to do, and he gave me impressions of...
Um, my name's Lauren Bell, I'm in the tenth grade. Um, I picked business and entrepreneurship. Um, I'm interested in business. I've always been interested in that. I feel like it's important to have that education. It's important for, um, daily life as well as just having your own business.
Have you all had your orientation meetings yet?
Mine is this one today.
Tell us what you think it's gonna entail. What, what do you, uh, what kind of activities and experiences do you, do you expect you'll have?
Um, I'll probably be trying to figure out which ones to play, what I'm gonna do, but welding, I don't understand, and you've got a lot to do.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, I think this is great, I mean, especially sophomores, all of you guys are, to like already be that forward-thinking and getting these experiences in these areas, and these are all very important areas. Um, I especially love, um, Abigail, I, I love seeing a female in the trades. I think that's, uh, super cool as well.
Yeah, very impressive that by your sophomore year, you kinda got a pretty direct line of what, what you guys are gonna do. Yeah, I'm forty-one, I'm not... So, good luck. That is awesome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You guys can turn around and make...
Alright, so continuing the parade of awesome things our students are, um, doing, we're gonna hear from Woodville about their Student Lighthouse project.
Kind of, not really a project, but yes, uh, we do have some great, uh, third, fourth, and fifth grade Wildcats here tonight. Um, they are members of our Student Lighthouse team. Um, and I wanna give a big shout-out. I'm up here introducing, Ms. Waymire really leads this team and has helped, uh, with this presentation tonight, so she deserves a lot of credit. Um, but I'm not gonna talk a lot, I'm gonna let them talk for you, okay? So, here they are.
Hello, we're the Student Lighthouse Team. I'm Alden.
I'm Peyton.
And I'm Owen.
I'm Joanna.
I'm Kayden.
I'm Evelyn.
I'm Whitney.
I'm Renee.
I'm Carson.
I'm Thea.
Each year, interested third, fourth, and fifth grade students complete an application for our Student Lighthouse Team. Applications are then reviewed by Ms. Waymire, Mr. Getz and his, and whole men teachers. Students are then selected and are members of the team for the remainder of the year. Some students on our team have served for multiple years, such as Evelyn, Kayden, me, and Whitney.
What we do, every late arrival day, the team meets with Ms. Waymire and brainstorm ways to make Woodville better. Other action team staff and Woodville students provide suggestions for tasks, ideas, and other duties. Some things we do are a student welcome program, student suggestion box, employee of the month, and other morale boosters.
New Student Welcome Program. The purpose of the program is to welcome new students to Woodville and help them adjust to their new environment.
New Student Tours. With, with new students, where team members meet, will meet new students at the office in the morning, and then greet them and give them a personal tour of the sh, school, highlighting the important areas, such, such as the cafeteria, classrooms, library, and more. This provides an opportunity for questions.
Student Suggestion Box. The purpose of the box is to let all students know that their voice matters, and together we can make a difference. Students can share their ideas, and once a month, the Student Lighthouse Team will check the box and consider the suggestions.
We have led several school-wide activities and initiatives to help improve our school culture and create a happy and positive place for everyone. One example is, this October, we hosted a pumpkin decorating contest, and the students voted on their favorite during lunch.
This year, the Student Lighthouse Team has taken on the importance of recognizing our outstanding certified and classified members during our monthly town hall celebration. Each month, the team selects staff members who have made a significant impact in our school. We write a brief bio explaining why they were nominated, highlighting their contributions and dedication to our school community.
Lighthouse Status. This year, our school is working towards Lighthouse Certification through Leader in May. Lighthouse Certification is a global, global standard of excellence of quality implementation of leader in may. Recognizing results in leadership, culture, and academics. Becoming a lighthouse school is a way to honor and celebrate the work of our school and community.
In February, we will host a site visit where our evidence collection will be reviewed. Our Student Lighthouse Team has a crucial part in that day. We will participate in leading school tours, student interviews, and presenting our leadership portfolios. We are excited to show off our leadership talents.
Any questions? Any questions?
I think all of them are great ideas, but I can relate to the Welcome Student Program because I came, I started Woodville, and I came halfway through my first grade year, and I can remember it was tough being a new kid in new school, so I think that's awesome. You guys are doing a good job.
I'm curious with the suggestion box, do you get any interesting or any funny or great ideas?
So, we just started it, so we haven't gotten everything, but this week, we're announcing everything and stuff.
Um, we are currently asking our students for, um, ideas and suggestions for our, um, leadership roles and other fun things around the school, just ideas.
Now, how, how often do you get together to brainstorm ideas?
It's really arrival, and it's really different.
Late arrival days. So, you got a, you got a list of potential great ideas?
Yeah.
Are you allowed, are you allowed to share one? Can you share one idea, or is it a secret for now?
Um, it's secret.
Secret.
Yeah, um, mostly it's different, like, upcoming events that we, we'll like plan out and stuff, but there's other things that, like, we do that we haven't done before.
So, you guys are applying, um, and I know that Woodville has done a lot of work with Leader in May and, um, kind of been the leader in the district, so you guys are applying to be recognized with this. Has that brought on additional work in collecting your evidence and doing that? Because I'm, I'm imagining you have a very large role in it in doing that preparation, and it's not the teachers getting that together, or Ms. Waymire, or Mr. G. Is that right? Tell us about that.
What about the practice day? What did you do? What did you do when Ms. Cordrea came?
Oh, so we, me and her helped lead tours, just like practice tours, to like show around the school and basically show everything that we've done throughout the school.
So point out some of the projects you guys have done with the bike bench and some of the other things. And that's what you're gonna do with the Leader and Me people when they come visit?
Yeah.
You guys have a lot of good things going on at Woodville, I mean the playground revamp and the, all the other stuff you've been doing and this group's awesome that you guys, you know, take a step forward and put yourself out there and, and put the extra work in to be a leader. So, good job by you guys.
That's good. Now, were you all nervous presenting tonight? Because you didn't seem nervous at all.
You didn't seem nervous at all.
You did a great job. You did a great job.
When, when we were speaking back in the, I guess it's the green room is what you would call that, you know, it's not green, but getting, getting ready for our presentation, we talked a little bit about what a lighthouse is and how that's symbolic and, and I'll say to you all, you know, in, in my years of experience in education, the best things in, in schools and the best thing in education have come from students and teachers. And, and you all are, are serving as lighthouses for others to see. So, so as people come and visit Woodville, we're really excited that, that you'll be ambassadors for, for how Woodville is showing the way. And so shake their hands and look them in the eyes and, and make sure you share that pride that you have going at Woodville. It's a great energy, great experience. You guys are doing really great work. Thank you so much.
Good job. Great job.
Let's get a good photo here and then turn to your families.
All right, they'll turn around, parents, and you can get a picture as well. Family. And as we always do at this point, please feel free, if you came to honor somebody, you can leave now, it won't hurt our feelings. You're more than welcome to stay, but.
Nobody wants to hear about board member committees?
This is the most, yeah, this is, this is the most I've got.
Well, this is, you know, the usual setup.
All right, we do not have any speakers for community forum tonight, so we will move into the action items for the evening. And the first of those will be election of officers for the board. And the recommended motion before you is appointment of Julie Kuhnhein as chairperson, Clem Fennell as vice chairperson, Brian Robinson as secretary, and Andrew Remlinger as treasurer. So do I hear a motion for those appointments?
I'll make a motion. Julie has, she did a great job stepping in for Ann when Ann had to step away from the board, so I appreciate that. She had stepped up, no, no issues at all and we continued on, so appreciate you doing that. I'm looking forward to Clem serving in the leadership role and, so I'll make a, I'll make a motion to have Julie as chair, Clem as vice chair, Mr. Robinson as secretary, and Andy as treasurer.
All right. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And thank you for, I didn't know where that was going, so I'm glad it went there.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Oh, oh yeah, I didn't know. Well, but I think they carry, so we're good. All right. All right, so yes, welcome to January meeting. There's a lot of beginning of the year housekeeping and continuing on, we will offer a motion, a recommended motion about the schedule of our regular meetings for the year. So the motion is approval to hold the regular monthly board meetings for 2025 at 6:30 on the second Monday of each month and hold regular monthly working board meetings at 4:00 PM on the Thursday prior to each monthly meeting with exceptions as identified on the 2025 Board Meeting Dates list, which all of that can be found online. So do I hear a motion for, or yes, a motion for approval of that?
I'll first.
Okay, so do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Right, motion carries. Continuing on, the next motion is the per diem stipend that was mentioned previously. So the motion is approval to donate stipends for the regular monthly meetings into a special fund for targeted purposes to be identified by the board. So, sorry Noah, I don't know if we made that clear to you before you came on, but do I hear a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then we've got our appointment of board members for committees, which have been discussed previously in our working board meetings, the specific committee, committee roles that everyone would have. So do I hear a motion to approve the 2025 Board Committee's list?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then I believe our final housekeeping one is our draft working budget for the 25-26 school year, because planning starts now as always. So do I hear a motion for approval of the draft working budget for the 25-26 school year?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I can second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So it's a good way to, to get our new board member up to speed on making motions.
You did well.
I know, okay. All right, so that being said, we're gonna move into another common fixture in our meetings hearing from Mr. Wissman.
Just when we got projects going on, which we always seem to do. So, just a little update on the Highlands Athletic Complex at Tower Park. You know, I know that the weather of late hasn't been great, but they have continued to be able to work where they can work. As Matt Morrell said to us today, frozen ground is good, frozen ground with snow on it, not so much. But they have been able to continue to clear areas of snow and still continue to excavate and work on the foundations for the building. So that work has continued. Obviously, the weather started pulling back a little over a week, week ago has had a little bit of an impact, but he's not concerned about, in effect, on the overall schedule at this point. I feel like we banked quite a bit of positive on the weather we had this summer that we're able to rely on throughout the winter. So, if we can get the snow to melt and then, you know, dry out, we'll be in really good shape. Well, we had previously decided that we were going to allow them to use some of the funds that were in the project to add lime to help dry everything out. So that work that had actually started prior to the recent snow event, so it's pretty optimistic that work will be back on that field area relatively quickly just because of the liming that they had already started and that they will continue to do. So, not, you know, not super positive news, but not bad news either. Well, I think we didn't have much rain all summer, they, they really, I think kinda got ahead, it seemed like, and they had, it actually got too dry and they had to use fire, fire liards to wet the soil in order to be able to maneuver it around and compact it. So, I feel like they had really good circumstances and kinda, you know, maybe got ahead of the game and now they're gonna kind of rely on some of those banked days. If Matt feels like there's gonna be an impact to the schedule, he will not, he will be forthright in upcoming and say, okay, we're to this point where we have to start to think about it. So as long as he is not raising any concerns, I feel like we're in good, good shape.
And I also, obviously being proactive and working ahead in those times is always appreciated because we never know what's gonna happen, so if you would share that with him and keep that up, we'd like that.
Any questions though? Okay, we do have one action item. Matt has submitted pay application number six, amount, amount of $523,296.
All right, so, you know, as we move forward, payment, so this, as mentioned by Mr. Wissman, is pay application six to Morrell in the amount of $523,296 for the Highlands Athletics, Athletic Complex at Tower Park project. So do I hear a motion to approve?
Sure.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right?
I, I did feel to mention that, you know, through these up there, Brian, Julianne, Sarah met today and about what, half an hour, maybe a little more out there at the project site?
It felt, it felt like more because it was very cold.
It was 36 minutes to be present.
Okay, but who's counting?
And we now have, take the shingles, the gutters, the downspouts, all, all those little items that we needed to kind of coordinate with the brick and, and so, all those little things that just, you know, we were planning on doing it and then, well, it wasn't the best weather to stand outside and do it, but, but, you know, cold feet, cold hands, but, but, you know, those decisions have been made and we're moving forward.
Made the decisions, hurry up and get done, you're saying?
We, we make sure to, to be thoughtful and, and reflective and it is.
The sunlight and the shade and the.
It's, it's super exciting, you know, to, to think about, think about it and a lot of thought around how do we stay true to what the district, you know, values and how do we honor tradition and, so, yeah, it's super exciting. Even though our.
Hey Jerry, the, the energy savings plan was in full effect on Thursday at our working board meeting too.
Oh, yes, we, yes. We would like to talk to them about maybe a couple, a couple of degrees.
It's central office?
Yes.
To be honest, what, what tends to happen is people go in there and they, and they get warm and they start pushing buttons and the next thing you know, it's kind of reprogrammed, be really cold.
Yes, we were, we did not.
Saving money, it felt good.
Well, the fire was on the TV, so if we could just convince ourselves.
No, if there was a large meeting in there, people probably throw those set points down and then you get a smaller group in there and it stays in that 65, 66 and. It wasn't that warm. It wasn't that warm.
It was 64, which, hey, we'll save the most.
The ones that do, right? I'll pop my head there tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next up, we'll hear about the calendar for the 26-25 school year, which is a hot topic. People are excited to hear.
I know, the unveiling of our findings for the calendar for next year. And we're considering this, we have a state regulation that we missfollowed, so we've had our committee members, our stakeholder feedback, and then we've analyzed those results, consulted with our leadership team as well as our board at the working board meeting to come to you tonight with a recommendation. And so with that, we'll show the calendar last, Amy, if you don't mind. We'll go save that ahead. Suspense will still hold, okay? So we are gonna be recommending a very similar start and end time as to this current school year, nothing's changing there. Our days will end the same. Then also, we are looking at an identical setup for next year with six shortened days that include late arrivals and those are listed here in the second paragraph and are indicated on the calendar in an orange color. And then we do exceed the state minimum, which is 1,062 instructional hours that we, we do value and that we also have on there the times for our preschool program calendar, which are just a tad bit different than our kindergarten through 12th grade students. And so those are listed in the last paragraph, they have a delayed start being September 2nd with some transition days in front of that, August 27th and 28th, and then they end on May 7th. So at this time, if we could see the unveiling of the official calendar that we're going to be looking at, it does show evidence of a very similar calendar to current year. All of the standard start dates look very similar to years past, that's historical, how those begin and end. We can roll through, one change that is happening in November as compared to December is that we've moved up a late arrival, we had a late arrival the first week of December and we pushed that to November 19th for this upcoming school year. But then in the second semester, the start of the school, you'll see, will have two full weeks and then if you can scroll to the top, Amy. So we'll start back on a two, or I'm sorry, a Monday, so we'll have the, the full week there. And then as we consider our spring break overwhelmingly through our stakeholder feedback from our survey, 70% to 30%, it evidenced that our stakeholders wanted the second week that was of preference, which is different than what we've had in the past. And so this is going to give us a spring break with our PD day on the 3rd, but students are off. Our official spring break days off would be April 6th through April 10th. So that's just a, a difference from previous years of the week that it falls on. And our end, we are ending on a Thursday with the makeup days tagged on to the end, those light blue. So we would have our teacher closing day immediately following the last day of school, whatever that would be. It would not have the light blue days in there, we didn't need them. Any questions about that?
I think a couple things to, to point out, you know, we, we have, historically had the first week of April. This one was just a challenge because it's literally the first day of April is in the middle of the week, so really determining what the first week of April looked like was, was part of why we opened it up to stakeholders and as Jamie said, it was, it was pretty overwhelming there as to, as to what all three stakeholder groups had discussed. The other thing I'll point out is, is when we're looking at makeup days, those are important as, as we're starting to see. So, so this will be a calendar that is attached to the website for planning purposes. So we encourage people to, to not make summer plans until well after the makeup days have, have been set. As, as you see this year, it's a very similar situation. We don't typically get this kind of snowstorm, about once every 10 years or so, but, but we have, have made those days up in, in the past, so this is a very similar model to what we're experiencing right now and, and how we approve our makeup days.
And I guess one other point is that the additional part of our stakeholder feedback is satisfied within the other components of the, the calendar. Examples include, you know, the priority of having two full weeks off at winter break, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, the Friday before spring break, all of those that rank were all satisfied like they have been in previous years.
All right, so having heard, we've discussed it in more detail in working board, but hearing the explanation here from Ms. Flaherty, do I hear a motion to approve the 25-26 school calendar, the length of day at each school, the beginning and end times for each school, the preschool calendar, and the shortened exam days at HHS and shortened days for PD at all five schools?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we will hear from Ms. Flaherty in regards to tuition wait, tuition rate, woo, for the 25-26 school. Tuition rate, woo, for the 2526 school year.
Yes, each year at this time, we consider where we are with our tuition rates and what rates need to be in place for 350 per year. So I'm coming to you with an approximate 4% raise for each of those categories, with the exception of one, and I'll get to that in just a second. So I'm proposing preschool to be at 315. Our students that are in state, grades K through 12 would be 3,800 and are out of state, the, that we have would be 7280. And then the ones that would be staying the same would be the rates for employees. We honor that. You as a board, two years ago, have set a rate of $1,500 for those that are in state. And so we're going to continue to honor that, or I suggest that we do that. And then if they were to be out of state, it would be 3,000.
I mean, we talked about this Thursday. I think we're all good to go.
I mean, obviously, when we talk in-state, out-of-state, recognizing certain state funds that would come with students and so pretty much that out-of-state to offset that not coming. And then with the employee piece, just continuing to think about what we can do to reward our staff that is here and then entice staff and retain staff in a competitive market, like trying to consider ways outside or in addition to what we value with salary increases as well. So I think that pretty much gives you guys a little background. All right, do I hear a motion to approve the tuition rates for the 2526 school year for grades K through 12 at a rate of 3,800? In-state, 7280 out-of-state? An additional tuition charge for preschool of 315 per month? And to require a non-refundable application fee of $50? And continue the procedure to require a 250 non-refundable deposit for new tuition students to begin participation in athletics, extracurricular activities? All fees will be applied to the tuition if the student attends an FTIS school.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carries. Thank you. Do we have more? Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, resiliency poll. Sorry, I had. No, no, no. Sorry, it was a discussion item, so it wasn't highlighted. My brain was not there. All right, so I think the last thing we'll hear from Ms. Flaherty is an update in regards to the resiliency poll that was given.
And so with this, each year we come to with our findings. We administered the resiliency poll in fall of 2024. It was approximately mid-October and we concluded prior to Thanksgiving. That was the window. And it showed us that we had 1,448 students in grade 3 through 12 participate. And what they were screened upon would be, at the bottom, the domains listed there that shows you there, the, the questions that were asked. And from that, the score population would then create a student rank in one of those four color areas. So after you answer a series of questions that takes about 15 minutes, then yours four would give you either optimal, satisfactory, slight concern, or may need assistance, or in the pack that was called at risk. And from that, our counselors have been trained. We've worked where we have a schedule where we can respond to the findings and have enough time to devote all the attention to the students that are needed and celebrate the greens, but also find ways to support those that come up yellow or, or red. And so with this, we can see that 62%, we look at the far left, that shows our scores this year, but 62% of all of our students, third through 12th grade, were either optimal or satisfactory, limited reading range. And that, that still is within, are within the positive result of the scales for resiliency for each of the domains. And so this just gives us a couple of other findings where overall, we've remained safe. I would have to say that that was a consistent word. There were many indexes that showed us in the elementary, middle, and high school that there were statistically insignificant differences from one year to the next, which shows a, a good thing that we are at least maintaining what we have or we're showing some signs of improvement as well. This went pretty fast. But I wanted to stop really quickly before moving on to and make sure that I express why we're doing it. And so, you know, the primary goal for the resiliency poll is for us to identify students that may be in need, but for us to both support and make that connection with the families, that for those that have chosen to allow their students to participate so that we can be a partner and reduce the barriers for those students. And so that's extremely important. The timing of this survey is of value. Our principals have shared that giving it in October gives us an opportunity to get to know the kids. They then can share and then give us time to help and support those that are in need. And so we have valued that October implementation and, and know that that is something that our teachers then take. They use PLC time. Teachers create plans at the school level so that students have what they need. So then moving on, we'll have three sets of findings for mean scores. I'm not going to go over each. We've seen these multiple times, but I want to make sure that you can read that fall 2024, again, the far left column, shows the current mean score. And there are various different ranges. So when you're looking at that, make sure that you reference the range that would be then to the far right so that you can determine. But again, like I said, we're well within the positive range of all of these indicators. We have a couple that are yellow and the yellow ones are showing gains. Even though ostracism looks like it's gone down, actually, a lower score is a positive for us. And those are what I believe evidences of items that we can control. The culture of our school, positive school experiences, or helping students not feel ostracized. And so looking at that, you'll see this over the next couple of schools, but we can see all three elementaries are showing growth there and very similarly with the middle school. And so you can see some fluctuations in scores. What I was talking about earlier about statistically insignificant, if you want to look at grit on that one, last year we were at 3.44, this year we're 3.45. And so a hundredth of a point of that mean score, we would consider that they remain the same. Also, I think that it's more important, too, to consider individual students than looking at the whole. And, and then finally, we have our high school scores. And we can see that high school ostracism actually went down significantly, which was a positive, from 1.94 to 1.85. And if you scan from right to left, it's actually the lowest. So that's something to celebrate. Still, our school experiences are high. I know that we try to compare ourselves pre-COVID on some of these scores as well and consider where we were there and, and what the changes were between our baseline before COVID and now. And then just two more slides I would like to share. This first one is showing you percentages of middle school and high school students that could be at the at-risk range. And so this is going to look at the students and how they responded to be identified as possibly being depressed or showing signs of anxiety. And so you can see that we have, for depression, it has showed out of the population, opt-in, 6% showing signs of depression and 4% showing signs at the high school. And then at the middle school for anxiety, 6% and then 3% at the high school. So that, that would be what the scores reflect. Again, our counselors take that information and share that with our families. And then last but not least, another sample of what would then be given to families if they were to ask for the scores or if there needs to be multiple conversations about how their child responded for us to be able to go through. So it becomes very detailed where we can give their parent or a therapist working with them outside of school, what they've responded if they've experienced to release that information. So it's overwhelmingly a positive experience that we have here as part of the implementation. I think that's it. Any questions?
So one thing to point out, and I think you mentioned this, but just to, to make it extremely explicit, students that are, are in the red, those are very swiftly notified parents. So to address potential concerns. And then also, one thing we've discussed as a board is how we consider this to be a part of kind of a bigger safety, you know, approach in terms of being proactive and helping students address potential issues, you know, as a way to help them get help that they may need before something could potentially grow and be more problematic. So that's part of our thinking. So we appreciate and, and appreciate hearing that and that information.
So no action to take on that?
Just discussion. So thank you. Now, I think you're finished. And Mr. Faust, are we going to be hearing the state of the C-DIP process?
All right, so good evening. So thanks for this opportunity to share with you our C-DIP, or Comprehensive District Improvement Plan. And when I say C-DIP, I really also can say C-SIP as well. So each of our building leaders, their stakebase councils led their school through a process of school improvement. And so I'm here to talk to you a little bit about that tonight at a pretty high level. So whether it be the C-DIP or the C-SIP, each entity went through a process of a needs assessment. And so through that needs assessment, we looked at data analysis. And so we looked at multiple data points. The ones that point data that carried the most significant amount of weight when it talks about creating your school improvement plan was your Kentucky Summit of Assessment. And so we received those results in the fall. We looked at that data and then we crafted our plan. So whether it's district improvement or school improvement, that was the data point that we drove many of our decisions for this plan improvement. We looked at our review of all of that and what are the, what are the practices that we've done, what resources we have. We really kind of identified a baseline and established our current state of where we are. And then we identified, okay, what are the priority areas that we need to strength, that we need to focus on from this point moving forward. And so taking all those factors into consideration, that's what allowed us, both our school and our district, to create the improvement plan. And so when I look at, rather than give you the big document, I just kind of talk about, what are the parts of a school improvement plan or a district improvement plan? So I have the anatomy here. So each improvement plan has a goal. And so this is written in five-year terms based off of the indicator. And if you remember when I reported back, of course, you won't remember, but I'll remind you. When we did the Kentucky Summit of Assessment results, there's an indicator score. That indicator score really has many layers to it. One layer that is, or one component of that that is consistent are these index scores, which is what we've, in education, have had for years, novice apprentice proficient distinguished, right? And so with the changes in assessment, with the evolution of how we do state assessment, we now are looking through an indicator score. And so that goal is written on a five-year target for each level. We then go to objectives. Those are annual objectives that are written out. And so what the state is asked us to do is to bundle content areas. So reading and math would have a goal. Writing, science, social studies would have a goal. Students that are in a gap group would have a goal. And so ultimately, what you end up with are seven goals, post-secondary readiness, EL rate, and then graduation status. So we're going to have seven components or seven goals. That's what makes up our improvement plan. And then these areas figure out or talk to how are we going to address those goals. So what progress monitoring are you going to do? What strategies are you going to put in place? What activities take place on a daily, weekly, monthly basis to help you achieve that longer-term goal? And so that's really the construct of every school improvement plan and our district improvement plan. And so without getting into each one of those components, I will share with you what are our seven district goals based off those indicator scores. And so first, we have a combined reading and math score. And we're going to look to make that increase from 89.5 to 96. Those are really high numbers in comparison to where you are if you look at our counterparts across the state. So again, we're looking for that. What is that, about a six-point growth over the course of the next five years? We really feel like we can achieve that with all those other layers, with the progress monitoring, the activities, the objectives. We can get into those areas. And so we're looking to make that gain. In the second goal, we have for science, social studies, and writing, again, looking to make, achieve that six-point growth over the course of the next five years. Gap, that is one, if I could put an asterisk. You do not talk about gap group in a five-year time span. That is an annual objective that you're trying to achieve. And so the gap group that we identified, our students were economically disadvantaged. When we sifted through all the data, that was the group that stood out and had the greatest differential between their same-age peers, where our students would lower socioeconomic status compared to their same-age peers who are not economically disadvantaged. That is a group that we should, and need to target at the building level leadership and say, okay, how can we support those students because they're struggling in these academic areas? And so that is the gap group that's been identified for us here. English learner progress, it's not that we just do not, the state of Kentucky requires you to have a subcount of 30 students in a tested area to set a goal for them. When we look at that district-wide, we have it in pockets at grade levels or in schools, but not holistically. So that's why we do not have a goal for English learner progress. School climate and quality, so that's the QSCS, School Quality and Climate Safety Survey that each of our students take as a part of their Kentucky Summit of Assessment. We're looking to increase that. And so that's, you know, how do students feel about? Do they feel, that really ties in nicely with what Jamie was talking about on resiliency. Do they feel state? Do they have a trusted adult? Do they feel like, you know, they have opportunities and experiences? How do they feel about homework? We always get killed on that question. Shocker. But, but so looking to increase that, those scores in the QSCS. Post-secondary readiness, Mr. Darnell and his team have done a great job of really looking to increase that post-secondary readiness. And it's really about being intentional, about setting up specific, you know, are our students aligned with their coursework? Are we providing them the opportunities to get industry certifications? So what are we doing to demonstrate that our students are post-secondary ready once they leave us here? And then ultimately, our grad, and then lastly, is our graduation rate. And so how can we look to, you know, bump that up? But you see, we're already almost at the ceiling there with our graduation rate. And so that's really difficult to, but. So those are the components of our school improvement plan. Again, that's our district improvement plan. Each school has gone through this process. We'll have the opportunity later on in the month where our board members will meet with our, each of our schools at our combined Board of Education Site-Based Meeting, where you'll hear about each school improvement plan and then functionally, what steps are they taking to achieve those five-year and one-year goals? But that's it. Any questions?
No, I think, thank you to the leadership team, to the building leadership, to being a part of this and seems very thoughtful and as we continue to, to try to move forward and improve on already solid performance.
Is there much trash talking going on in the office between you and Andy this week? Are you guys avoiding each other?
Till the 20th, only one can win. All right.
We're going to charge it for a year, you won't quit.
All right, the next item, I think, is probably something that hasn't happened really yet, but do we have any board committee updates? I think, being at this time of year and since some of us may have moved in our responsibilities.
Our calendars, sir.
Okay. Glenn would like that noted. His, one of his committees is achieved. Yeah.
We are, we are going to have breakfast in the faculty.
Oh, yeah. Yes. Yes, yes, this Wednesday. Yes. So that is coming. Special, this is hot sandwich. Yeah. So really good stuff. Get excited. Yeah, south side sandwiches. So yes, and thank you to the board members that are going to be doing that on Wednesday. So good call, good, good remember.
Thank you, Ann Mark.
And thank you, Ann, kind of a continual, always breakfast committee member. Yes. All right, next would be the approval of the consent agenda with all board members having had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about the items contained therein. Approval of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion for that?
It's a move.
A second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And then that takes us to, sorry, getting through all the consent agenda. It looks like the next thing is adjournment. So at 7:39, we will. It looks like the next thing is adjournment. So at seven-thirty-nine, we will adjourn.